Good evening, everyone. This is Mayor Cyril Jefferson convening regular meeting of the High Point City Council. Here with me on the dais, we have every member of council present, save Councilmember Andrew. We also have Madam Clerk, Madam Attorney, and Madam Manager as well. We'll ask you all here to join us for a moment of silence, as well as the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We've got our dais, and I'll ask if, from members of council, if there's any items on our agenda that need to be adjusted. Not, then we'll entertain a motion to adopt. Motion is recognized. The Councilmember Holmes, second, recognized. The Mayor for Tim Moore. Any discussion on the motion to adopt our agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any against? The ayes have it, and our motion is adopted. To kickstart our meeting, we will have a proclamation, and I want to ask if Mr. Flag is here? Is it Kerry Flag? Larry, apologies. I started to say Cooper Flag at first, but y'all don't be offended Tar Heel fans. Alright, well, this is for ALS Awareness Month, and this is a very important occasion to recognize, and in Mr. Flag's absence, we still want to take this moment to recognize it. Whereas, amyotrophic lateral sclerosis, ALS, also commonly known as Lou Gehrig's disease, is a progressive fatal neurodegenerative disease in which a person's brain loses connection with their muscles, slowly reducing a person's ability to walk, talk, eat, and eventually breathe. And whereas thousands of new ALS cases are reported every year, estimates show that every ninety minutes, someone's diagnosed with ALS, and someone passes away from ALS. Whereas, on average, patients diagnosed with ALS survive only two to five years from the time of diagnosis. Whereas, the exact causes of ALS are still unknown, and there's no known cure for ALS. Whereas, people who have served in the military are more likely to develop ALS and die from the disease than those with no history of military service. Whereas, securing access to new therapies, durable medical equipment, and communication technologies is of vital importance to people living with ALS. Whereas, clinical trials play a pivotal role in evaluating new treatments, enhancing quality of life, and fostering assistive technologies for those living with ALS. Whereas, ALS Association is the largest philanthropic funder of ALS research globally, and has committed more than $154 million to support more than 550 projects across the United States and eighteen other countries. Whereas, ALS Association is committed to accelerating the pace of discovery fueled by the hope that one day ALS will be a livable disease for everyone, everywhere, until a cure can be found. And whereas, amyotrophic lateral sclerosis Awareness Month provides an opportunity to increase public awareness of the dire circumstances of people living with ALS, acknowledge the terrible impact this disease has on those individuals and their families, and support research to eradicate this disease. Now therefore, I, Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of the City of High Point, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as ALS Awareness Month. Call upon all of our citizens within this community to join in supporting ALS research, advocating for increased funding and standing in solidarity with those affected by this relentless disease. Can we please recognize the moment with a round of applause? Britt, I thought you were gonna pat me on the back for pronouncing that correctly twice. I thought someone was gonna do it. I'm working on it. Alright, for this next one, I believe we've got some young ladies that we're actually gonna recognize here next. And for that, I want to call up, and I don't know, do y'all want to be recognized together? You want to do separately? Wanna go together? Okay, come on up. Will you all please join me in welcoming Ms. High Point 2025 and Ms. High Point's Teen 2025? Okay, now, I have to ask, 'cause I haven't looked at the sash yet. Okay, you're Ms. High Point Senior, you're Ms. High Point. Okay, couldn't tell, I apologize. Okay, we've got two proclamations, and I know you've got a team with you. Feel free if you want to get closer for pictures, my angle is best when they come this way. Whereas, on Saturday, November 16th, 2024, Ella Parker captured the title of Ms. High Point 2025. She was crowned by Ms. Cameron Hollowell, Ms. North Carolina's Teen 2024. And whereas, the Ms. High Point Scholarship Competition is operated by the Ms. High Point Organization, and is a nonprofit, an official preliminary within the Ms. America Organization. Under the direction of Local Director Mary Holly Hines, this is the forty-fifth time the City of High Point will have had a representative at the Ms. North Carolina Competition. And whereas, Ella has demonstrated exceptional leadership and commitments of fostering inclusion within the High Point community through her community service initiative, Inclusion for All. She has worked tirelessly alongside organizations such as the Special Olympics, the Arc of High Point, and Best Buddies, forming partnerships that promote awareness and support for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Whereas, Ella Parker has rightfully earned the respect from the citizens and organizations of High Point, and through her accomplishments, has brought great honor and prestige to the Ms. High Point Scholarship Organization and the High Point community. Now therefore, I, Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of the City of High Point, do hereby present this proclamation to Ella F. Parker and express our sincere congratulations on being crowned Ms. High Point 2025. Whereas, on Saturday, November 16th, 2024, Kerry Rader captured the title of Ms. High Point's Teen 2025. Kerry was crowned by Cameron Hollowell, Ms. North Carolina's Teen 2024. Whereas, the Ms. High Point Scholarship Competition is operated by the Ms. High Point Organization, and is a nonprofit, an official preliminary within the Ms. America Organization under the Director of Mary Holly Hines. This is the fourth time the City of High Point will have had a representative at the Ms. North Carolina's Teen Scholarship Competition. Whereas Kerry founded Kerry Cares, a community service initiative empowering youth through volunteerism and fostering compassion through action, inspiring her peers to serve and give back. Through her consistent efforts, ranging from organizing donation drives, preparing blessing bags, and serving food at shelters, Kerry has become a beacon of hope, advocacy, and leadership in the High Point community. And whereas Kerry Rader has rightfully earned the respect from the citizens and organizations of High Point, and through her accomplishments, has brought great honor and prestige to the Ms. High Point Scholarship Organization and the High Point community. Now therefore, I, Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of the City of High Point, do hereby present this proclamation to Kerry Mahali, Mahaly Rader, I was doing so good, and express our sincere congratulations on being crowned Ms. Teen High Point 2025. Can we please clap it up? It's up to y'all. Okay, alright. Now y'all don't judge me, that both of them are taller than me. Awesome. Thank y'all so much. We appreciate you all. Alright, that was fun. Our next guest is not wearing heels, but that's okay, we still love you Robbie. Why don't you come on up for Public Works Week, and if you've got anyone else with you that you'd like to be recognized, please invite them up as well. Can we please clap it up for our incredible staff as they come forward? Okay, it's Public Works Week. Does that mean we get a discount on our trash pickup this week? Be careful what you ask for. There's a lot of stuff on Next Door, oh, leaf pickup, but we're not gonna go there. Fall is coming. Whereas, public works, infrastructure, facilities, and services are of critical importance to the health, safety, economy, and well-being of our community. And whereas, such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, engineers, and administrators representing all levels of government who are responsible for and must plan, design, construct, inspect, operate, and maintain the public works facilities essential to serve our citizens. Whereas, the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works functions is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work that they perform. Whereas, it is in the public interest for our citizens, civic leaders, and children to learn and understand the importance of vital public works programs, such as safe drinking water, sanitary and storm sewers, streets and highways, public buildings and grounds, public fleets, and solid waste collection and disposal. And whereas, the theme for this year's celebration is People, Purpose, Presence, and 2025 marks the sixty-fifth Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. And therefore, I, Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of the City of High Point, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th to May 24th, 2025, as Public Works Week in the City of High Point, North Carolina, and call upon all of our citizens, our civic leaders, in this community to gain knowledge, and gain knowledge of and maintain a progressive interest in the public works programs vital to our everyday lives, and to recognize the daily contributions which public works officials make to ensure our health, our safety, comfort, and our quality of life are intact. Can we please celebrate these incredible professionals? Alright, there you go. Right in the middle there. Thank you. Thank you all for that. We want to make sure, before we transition, that everyone's aware that this Wednesday, at the Public Library, from ten to twelve, the city will have Public Works Day, where a number of our public works professionals will be there for active demonstrations. Please come on out, if you can, and celebrate and be a part of the engagement. We think it'll be pretty special. Thank you all for that. Alright, we'll move to our consent agenda. If all councilmembers have had some time to review the items that are under our consent agenda, when ready, we'll be glad to accept a motion for our consent agenda. Motion is recognized. The Councilmember Peters, second, Councilmember Holmes. Any discussion on the motion to approve our consent agenda? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Next item, under general agenda, is item 2025-187. This is a public hearing for the proposed FY 2025-2026 City of High Point annual budget. Council is requested to conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed budget. Note that our Budget and Performance Director, Stephen Hyer-Luke, is here, in case any members of council have questions, but at this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Those who signed up to speak will have three minutes to provide your comments on the budget, and if you did not get a chance to sign up to speak, you still have an opportunity to speak. We'll just call you in order, not only that you're listed, but the order in which you come and line up. At this time, I will recognize Mr. Ken Orms.
Good evening. My name is Ken Orms. The proposed 2025-2026 budget includes a number of baffling requests and comments. Here are just a few. The city manager wants to hire four civilian traffic investigators at a cost of $385,000 or more than $128,000 per employee. For the same amount of money, the city could hire seven more sworn police officers, and having more sworn police officers would be a better use of taxpayer money than overpaid civilian employees who are prohibited from spending one minute of their time to help police keep citizens of High Point safe. In addition, the city manager request does not include any information about how many property damage investigations are currently being done, or how adding three civilian employees are going to improve overall safety in the city. The city manager wants to add another employee to the Budget Department that will cost $95,000. This is in addition to the $66,000 buyer position that was added to the current budget. The buyer was supposed to identify potential savings for city purchases. Did that happen? Did the person identify $66,000 in savings, and if not, the position should be eliminated because it's costing taxpayers more money than the position saves. In the current 2024 budget, the city manager spent $218,000 for an assistant supervisor and public services IT coordinator in the Water Department. The city manager now wants to spend an additional $345,000 for a new Water Resources Manager, because she wants the new standalone department. Why is the existing department unable to manage this function? The city manager wants taxpayers to pay $65,000 for an administrative assistant in the Fire Department to be a time card and payroll backup person. This position pays more than police and firefighters, and why is there a problem keeping proper time cards and payroll records in the Fire Department? The first priority of the city and the city manager and the council is to protect the citizens of High Point, yet there is no mention, no mention, of hiring more police and firefighters, and every single new employee that the city manager wants to hire will make more money than police officers and firefighters. Last year, the council cried poor as the city raised property taxes. This brought in 6.9% more money. Taxpayers were told the money would be used to give police and firefighters more money. Bi suggested if the city could save just one penny out of every dollar, no tax increase would be needed, but the city and the council said that was impossible. Yet somehow, the council found a way to give the city manager and the city attorney a 12% pay increase, as well as their own salary and monthly expenses. There is a saying that liars figure, but figures never lie. Sure looks like this applies to the city and the council last year, this year, and every year.
Mr. Orms, thank you so much. Next on our list is Dr. Elma Harrison. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to address council.
Dr. Elma Harrison here. Before I get started, I want to say that I have lived in over a dozen cities, and worked in over a dozen cities across this country, and High Point ranks a step above, and I want you all to know that. Thus, the all-American city, which we don't talk enough about, but we should. Good evening, Madam City Manager, Mayor, and City Council. I stand before you this evening to call to your attention a matter of concern as you finalize the city budget for 2025-2026. We want to ensure that we amplify the needs of the South Side community to include solutions to impending and ongoing water issues. As we consider the need for testing for PFAD, new standards and guidelines, and the impending class action suit, South Side community hopefully will remain a top-of-mind consideration. It is our hope that the City of High Point, the Southwest Renewal Foundation, Guilford County, and Piedmont Regional Council are all able to continue to partner and leverage their value proposition and their assets in these water matters. We continue to propose actionable items for consideration as we move forward to a solution. Advocate for regular independent testing of the community's tap water. Advocate for city council to form an action committee to focus on strategic solutions to include sewer lines and pipeline refitting evaluations to ensure the systems remain on task for managing a clean water supply. It is our hope that we can develop actionable solutions as we exercise care and humanity as we consider all of my thoughts. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. Next, we'll have Mr. Louis Thibodeau. If you'll come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address council.
My name is Louis Thibodeau. I reside at 1242 Kensington Drive, High Point. City Council, I came tonight asking if you remember the oath of office you swore to when you came on this council. In that, I believe it stated that you serve all the people of High Point. As you just brought up the water issue, I believe if we've got drinking water, it should be being tested so that it is safe for all of us. I believe in Jesus Christ and pray for each of you, and I pray that you will see God as real, and we, the citizens, need help. In fees and taxes going up and up, what do we do with funds that are left from the current budget that's not spent? I would like to see some of those funds maybe go to incentives for that department people that was not used, because if you've got so many people in one group and having to work overtime and do different things that they have to be stressed to do because there's low manpower, I think they should be rewarded in some way, whether it's better, however the city feels. But I think they should be awarded for that. Understanding the savings that the city has, I suggest, like I said, we use some of that to maybe help them with insurance or whatever we can, but to help them to show that we appreciate them for the added, for the added work they're doing to get the job done. And I want to say it again, let me pray for you. Dear God, I pray for each one of the city councils. We look at this budget, that we remember the citizens that you represent. I know it's hard, it's a lot of things to look at, but I pray that you keep us in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thibodeau. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for budget? Mr. Teal, if you'll come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address council.
Thank you, Mayor. Matt Teal, 1018 Emery Circle. Great communities have great schools, and I have come to believe the single best way that we as High Point can build a brighter future for our community is investing in our public schools. Certainly, most of that funding comes from the city, or excuse me, from the state and the county, and yet, our city and our city government have a big role to play in that, I believe, as well. I want to thank the council for your support for High Point Schools' partnership over the years. Just last Thursday, we recognized seven high school seniors, one from each of the public schools, GCS schools, that have High Point students at them. This year, first time ever, we added Ragsdale and GTC. This year, first time ever, we added Ragsdale and GTC C-Jamestown because we recognized those schools also attract students from High Point. How are we able to expand the reach and the work and the impact of the work we're doing? It's through the support of benefactors and also from support from our city council. You've been wonderful supporters of High Point Schools' partnership in the past. I know as you're working on the budget, I ask you to continue that support going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Till. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in the budget hearing? Not, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And note that council is not voting on this item at this time. However, if there are any general questions before we leave this item, council can feel free to ask it of staff. Or comments.
Well, I just wanted to respond and say that I do plan to propose funding for High Point Schools' partnership, as well as the UNCG eviction mediation program through our remaining ARBIT-enabled dollars in an upcoming finance committee.
Thank you, Councilmember Cook.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, as well, I would also like to say, as we think about Public Works Week, we always consider infrastructure to be pipes and roads and things of that nature, but infrastructure also is people. And so, as we think about the workforce that we deal with today in our society, we also have to think about that we're competing for the best people, not only with other municipalities, but also with the private sector as well. And so, as someone who works daily in workforce development, I can tell you that many companies are considering that right now, retention is just as important as recruitment. So, when we think about the best people that we have maintaining them, we also have to think about that as we go forward in our budget as well. To continue to deliver high levels of service, as we have come to be known to do as the city of High Point, we need to make sure that we compensate and take care of those people who constitute our infrastructure as human resources in our city. So, that is chief among us as we consider our budget every year.
Councilman Holmes, thank you. While we're on that point, Madam Manager, if you don't mind, just clarifying, there was a comment about leftover funds being used for staff incentives. I wrote that note down, and recall that we do have a system for merit increases and payments to staff members, and that actually gets planned into the budget. Do you mind just speaking to that for the public to be aware of that?
Sure. Mayor, members of council, and those of you maybe here from the public and also listening online, this is Tasha Logan Ford, City Manager. When we're preparing the city's budget, we do put in our merit, and it's an average of 3% merit that we have in for employees. We also have a system in place where every three years, well, every year, we study a third of our workforce to make sure that the salaries that we're paying are competitive in the market. This year, we're currently in phase one of a three-year study, and we make sure that those increases are also part of the operating budget. We also make sure that we're able to maintain the retirement system for our employees. This year alone, with the requirement from the state that we're putting in there, I believe that's a little over a million dollars that we're absorbing in the city's budget to make sure that we're continuing to fund the retirement system for employees. And we also make sure that we're looking at what our healthcare benefits look like for employees. The city absorbs a significant portion of the increases. We do tend to pass those increases along for family coverage, or if you have a child that's on our insurance plan, but we try to make sure that we reduce the cost of that insurance to our employees as much as possible. There was also a comment that was made around savings that might be part of the city's budget from the previous year. As part of the budgeting process, we do look at something that we call attrition. We know that there will be some turnover in positions throughout the year, so we also plan for that as part of the budget process, and it's part of our revenue projections that we use. So, those things are part of the planning of preparing the budget that's presented to council.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions on that item before we continue to hear other feedback from council members? Are there any other questions or comments about the budget or anything we've heard so far tonight? I would note that we heard the feedback regarding needs of Southside community and water, and that continues to be one that we discuss and talk about. Our staff has been down to Southside and continues to be in touch with residents about what's going on down there. Want to make sure folks are aware that if you think you have a water quality issue, let us know. Our folks will come and check it out, and we'll assess if it's an issue from the city's pipes, which would reach multiple residents in the neighborhood, or if it's only going to your house, that means that on your private property, your own pipes, are something that would need to be tested and figured out and remedied as well. And so, we want to make sure that we have a staff that highly engages with residents and a staff that cares, and we're going to make sure to take the time to do that. I know several council members have gone down to Southside since we've been having these conversations the past few weeks, but I want to say thank you to the folks from Southside who have been showing up really consistently. I see you all here, and we appreciate y'all taking the time to show up and be engaged and not let anyone forget about Southside. So, thank y'all for that. Also, heard a comment about civilian personnel in the police department. I think it is important to note that we've got sworn officers who play an incredible role in keeping our city safe. And sworn officers, when they are asked to deal with a number of items that you don't probably need a sworn officer to do, whether that's traffic, that also has to deal with our response when someone's in mental health crisis. Our police department and our police chief, Curtis Cheeks, does an awesome job navigating all types of calls, but we're responding in real time to the data that we know, which is that our sworn officers can spend more time protecting in the way that they need to protect if we have maybe civilian workforce to address needs. I want to take some time here, Madam Manager, if you don't mind, and speak to that. I probably didn't do as good a job talking about it as you would do, but if you can talk about why civilian personnel is needed versus only using sworn officers.
Absolutely, Mayor. There are a number of positions within the police department that are civilian positions. I think what's most important to note about the civilian traffic investigators is when the legislation was passed by the General Assembly, it specifically talked about us not supplanting existing sworn positions for us to be able to implement this program. So, although we may have some vacant positions that are within the department, in order for us to create this program, we had to make sure that we were actually bringing on new personnel and we were not reducing the number of sworn positions that we have. Ideally, we would like to be able to see our police department fully staffed and not to have any vacant sworn positions, but while we're going through that process, having the civilian traffic investigators in place will allow them to respond to a number of traffic accidents where there are no major injuries, either there are mainly some minor property damages, and be able to hopefully shift a little bit of that workload to the staff that would be there. So, that's the primary reason for us to be able to stand up the civilian traffic investigator program.
Yeah, and Madam Manager, you made a great point there. I see our police chief, I'm actually going to ask, if you don't mind, Chief Cheeks, if you'll come up just for a brief moment here. I think it is important because there are a lot of folks in our community who support our police. We just had, I think it was Police Week, if I'm not mistaken, and our event on Friday for Police Memorial. And so, there's a lot of folks who appreciate what our officers do, but if you could just talk for a bit, because you know your folks, they're responding to all types of calls all day long, what is it like to have civilian personnel responding to some of those incidents where sworn officers don't have to be at?
Good afternoon. Curtis Cheeks, Chief of Police. One of the things we're looking at, as Madam Manager alluded to, is maximizing where we have guns and badges. We've identified several positions where civilian workforce or our professional staff can perform essential tasks and leave the officers to free time to do everything from proactive policing to community engagement. So, we're looking to maximize those opportunities while we still kind of navigate the vacancies that we have, which currently sits at 35.
Thank you, Chief. Yes, ma'am.
I wish that Councilman Andrew was here because he didn't ask the question about the price tag that was attached to that, about whether it also included the equipment that would be necessary.
It doesn't.
It wasn't all salaries.
Correct. Councilmember Cook, that's exactly correct. For all the positions that you see in the budget, it includes the actual salary for the position. It includes any necessary equipment that would be associated with the position. It also includes any benefits that are associated with the position. So, for each position that's outlined in the budget, all of that is factored into the number, so it doesn't just reflect the salary of the position. And we'll have that response that was asked when we have our budget work session to share with the full group in detail. And we also did the comparative analysis of how the salary grade for our positions here in High Point compare with the example that Councilmember Andrew provided, which was from Charlotte.
And if I could just also add that for the past year, I've been involved in the Sequential Intercept Mapping Group. That's a collaborative effort between Greensboro, High Point, and the county. It includes many of the social services, law enforcement, and several other organizations. And Greensboro has had the B-Hart team, as well as the civilian traffic officers, and it is consistently one of the things that's highlighted as providing amazing safety and service that's preventing people from ending up in hospitals and jails that are having other issues or tying up police officers for regular traffic stops. And so, I just want to say, from the perspective of the people who work in these services all day, they are saying great things about these programs in Greensboro, and I'm very grateful that High Point is moving forward.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor Portem, were you about to say something?
Not on that subject. I'll jump in with another footnote, just Councilman Moore. The budget, maybe you'll laugh, maybe you won't. I've been up here, fortunately, a few years, and the, this budget does not include any increase in salary for council. And I only bring that up because the last increase that was instituted came after 14 years of no increase in salary. There is a inflation-adjusted increase for some travel expenditure reimbursement, but I will let you know that the councils I've been involved with are very active, and they do it because they care about the constituents and the community. And some of that involves county-level positions. You have representatives up here with state-assigned positions and some with national-assigned positions. And so, it's just, it's part of what comes with the job, and they add that to their plates and their personal lives and an opportunity and a hope of making things better back here in the hometown.
Thank you, Mayor Portem Moore. Any other comments at this time or questions on the budget? I would note for the public and those listening that we've got our next budget work session this Wednesday at 4:00 will be over in the Fish Bowl.
I'll be here, sir.
I'll be here.
Because we have presentations from the High Point.
Understood.
The downtown High Point, so we'll meet in this room.
Forgive me, our next budget work session will be this Wednesday, 4:00, here in this room. You feel free to join us. You come in and you hear council ask more questions. That's when we get to dig into things more deeply. If you're not able to be here in person, we also live stream, just like we do this meeting, so you'll be able to listen in. You can go to the CF High Point YouTube page, be able to hear that. Can they also go to the Facebook page? Is it mostly just a YouTube page? It's just YouTube? Okay. All right. With that...
We don't have public comment during the budget work sessions.
We do not have public comment during the budget work sessions. However, we did have the budget hearing tonight. We also are always glad to receive emails, and so, if folks have continued questions, you can email us, you can call down here to City Hall. A lot of times, if you've got questions about something that's specifically in the budget, there's a number of staff members who have worked very hard to put the budget together. You heard the police chief today talk about what's in the budget for the police department. He works with the manager on that, same for every other department, public works, so on and so forth. And so, if you've got questions, you can reach out, and those questions can get clarified. With that, there's no vote on this item, so we'll transition to item 2025-179. This is a public hearing on Guilford County Board of Education, Annexation 25-01. I'm going to recognize Mr. Shannon, and I'm going to ask a question. Mr. Shannon, do you plan to present on both of the items together? Okay. We're going to need to take two separate votes, but can we do one hearing? We don't need to do two hearings, just one hearing. Okay. So, at this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and we'll invite Mr. Shannon to come forward and address council on these items. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Herb Shannon, Senior Planner with the City of High Point Planning and Development Department, and I'll be providing you the staff overview of Annexation Case 2501 and Zoning Map Amendment Case 2504. As you've noted, these two cases are related, so we'll be doing a combined presentation, but you will have to vote on them separately. These two requests return to a tract of land in the southeast portion of the city, lying north at intersection of East Springfield Road and Ingram Road. That's north of Fairfield Road. This is the location of Allen J Elementary School. The applicant, the Guilford County Board of Education, is requesting annexation and rezoning to facilitate redevelopment of this site. This site is currently developed with a 41,000-square-foot elementary school, Allen J Elementary School. This school was constructed in 1956 and has been expanded several times. Most recently, several modular buildings have been placed on this site to address student capacity needs. Guilford County Schools is proposing to upgrade and expand this facility, and this will consist of demolishing the existing building and constructing a new school. This slide depicts how that area of the city looked in the late 1950s and 1960s. This site was developed in Guilford County, but in 1960, there was a large annexation in the southeastern portion of the city's planning area, where over 12,000 acres of land was annexed, and that's the area that's outlined in red. At that time, the Allen J Elementary School site was half its size, just a 10-acre site, and the building was much smaller, as you can see. But what happened is, over the years, the school expanded, and you have a situation where the eastern half of this parcel, where the school is located, is in the city. The western portion of this site is outside the city, and you have part of the building in the city and part outside the city. So, with this proposal to update the facility, staff has been in work with Guilford County to address this unusual situation. So, the annexation petition proposes to bring that western portion on the left side of the site into the city, so when the site is redeveloped, all of the school is within High Point city limits. Staff considers this a logical expansion of the city's planning area. The site abuts the city limits on three sides. City utilities already serve the school. City service vehicles already serve the school and surrounding neighborhood, and this is a logical extension of the city's annexation policy for this area, and annexation would not in any way affect the city's ability to provide services. So, staff is recommending approval that this western half of this site be annexed, so the entire school parcel is within the city limits and bring the entire building within the city limits. In regards to the rezoning request, this is a slide of our current zoning pattern in this area. The area highlighted in yellow is single-family residential. There's a multifamily tract just west of the school. With proposal to tear down the existing school and build a new facility, it was thought it would be much easier, eliminate any complications, if all of the site was in the city, and to support the larger facility, staff had recommended that the applicant consider a conditional zoning institutional district. That fits in with the comprehensive plan, which designates this area as suburban neighborhood. That suburban neighborhood place type supports single-family development between three and seven units per acre, but also supports institutional uses such as schools and churches. Thus, rezoning to the institutional district would be in keeping with the city's comprehensive plan and policies for this area. To ensure compatibility to surrounding neighborhood, the applicant's offered conditions to prohibit certain institutional uses. They've offered a conditional zoning plan that notes the general location of access points and provides for higher landscaping standards where the site abuts existing single-family dwellings to ensure compatibility. This is the aerial photo of the site, and as you can see, that school is half in the city and half outside the city. This is their conditional zoning plan, where those areas circled in red are the proposed new access points. They pretty much mirror access to the site already. And to the east and west of the site, there's a single-family dwelling on each side to ensure compatibility to add... To ensure compatibility, the applicant has offered higher landscaping and buffering conditions to protect those abutting single-family homes. In looking at this proposal, staff considered several issues that are part of your package very briefly. This site did require a traffic impact analysis because it will be increasing traffic in the area. This photo is of the proposed layout. This is an illustrative plan. The applicant's still fine-tuning their layout, but they have, their traffic engineer looked at how the existing traffic stacks into Springfield Drive. They wanted to make sure with the proposed new school, which will be approximately 111,000 square feet, looking at a two-story building, and increasing student capacity from 400 to 700 students, the applicant wanted to ensure that student drop-off, where parents come to drop off their students and pick up, currently that stacks into Springfield. They wanted to ensure that that does not happen with this new design, so they proposed that long loop drive along the right side of the screen to ensure all stacking would take place on-site. Their traffic engineer has documented they need about 2,290 linear feet of stacking. They're providing over 2,600 feet of linear stacking, so this will be improving the traffic situation in this area. They've also put together a traffic management plan that addresses general traffic rules for parents, how parents are to drop off the students. They have a separate drop-off and stacking area for buses to alleviate any conflict between parents and buses entering the site. And their traffic impact analysis also addressed early release policies, bus queuing, and emergency situations. Some quick points to note, staff has noted in the report that this report, that this request, will not negatively impact adjacent property owners. They will be improving the traffic situation far as having all student drop-off occurring on-site. And the request does not change or introduce a new land use pattern into this area. A school is already on this site. This will be a situation where that older facility that's over six decades old will be replaced by a new, modern facility. Both the comprehensive plan and the land use policies do support institutional uses such as this in residential areas. And this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, as it is proposing a preferred growth scenario where we are basically cleaning up a donut hole, upgrading the compatibility issues and traffic for this area. And this is a situation where Guilford County School is looking at future educational demands in this area and proposing public services that will meet current and future demands. Thus, staff is recommending approval of this request to rezone this parcel to a conditional zoning institutional district. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this application at the April public hearing and recommend approval by a vote of 7 to 0. That is a brief staff overview of this request. Staff is available for any questions you may have on the annexation or the zoning requests.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Are there any questions for staff from council?
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. At this time, we'll hear from the applicant.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and nice to see you, all members of council. My name is Amanda Hodiern, offices at 804 Green Valley Road, Suite 200 in Greensboro, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Guilford County Board of Education as the property owner and the applicant for this case here before you. I hope you'll agree, and you're thinking that this is a pretty straightforward request. I don't have a lot of nuance to add to what Mr. Shannon has presented, but I did want to lift up and emphasize a few points. And we'll just actually start here with this aerial map. So, I want to call your attention to the fact, this is, I would venture to say probably unique, that this rezoning request is before you, not asking you to make a land use change. We're just asking to clean up, both administratively and through a site functionality standpoint, the existing land use that's already there. So really, this just is an opportunity for improvement in all aspects. This, of course, is before you tonight. The origins of this is the 2019 Adequate Masters Facilities Plan that Guilford County Schools did, that of course, you've seen the fruits of that plan at work all across the school system and here in High Point. So this is the Allen J Elementary School campus getting the renovations, or rather, rebuild, as recommended by that plan. As Mr. Shannon mentioned, when Guilford County staff got to work on this, looking at it, processing with the city, how to go about the plan for the rebuild, not only did we know there were some construction things to work through, but from an entitlement standpoint, we had this oddity where the campus was sitting partially inside the city and partially outside of the city. So, we wanted to clean that up. And also, staff suggested that we go ahead and rezone to the institutional district with appropriate conditions to better capture the way the city now, you know, 68 years later, handles these types of institutional uses within residential districts. So, we took that advice in that conference and guidance and are here before you, applying for both that voluntary annexation to come fully inside of the city and that rezoning to the conditional institutional district pursuant to staff's suggestion. And again, as part of a cleanup, to make this all more in keeping with the way you do things today here in High Point, and less complex, more efficient. So here, you have the subject property. You see the site as it currently sits today. So not only are we going to clean it up on paper, but we're also going to clean it up from a site functionality standpoint. So I'll talk about that here. As Mr. Shannon mentioned, this is presented, this is not a site plan rezoning, of course, this is just entitlements, but, you know, we do back into the right entitlement request by doing our homework first, and we do that with staff. And a lot of that is with the traffic study, as you've heard about and has been reviewed by your traffic department or your transportation department. As you always hear with schools, a lot of that has to do with the queuing and making sure that we are not creating or exacerbating any traffic congestion. So here, we're making it better. I mentioned part of this cleanup was site functionality. So, as you see here, you see the long back-and-out loops, you see all the different color coatings for where things go. So the way that we're making this traffic queuing situation better, it's multifaceted. One, we're making use of the land better. You saw before, we were sort of squished onto that one side of the site. As part of this rebuild, we're squaring up the building, spreading out, making better use of the acreage we have available to us, and then being able to run those queuing patterns around that and within that more efficiently. So you see the double-loaded, that's two rows of cars for the red and the light blue. On the right-hand side of your screen, that's for parent drop-offs. You see the separate entrance in the yellow on the left-hand side, that's for bus drop-offs. You heard, that's to eliminate conflict between those two types of traffic. You see, coming off that parent loop, you see the additional, I guess, hot pink area where you pull off if you're dropping your kids off to pre-K. We all know it's harder to get your kid out of the car at that age. Sometimes you have to handle the car seat and so forth, so you need a little extra time, you need to get out of the way of the other parents who can go faster. So all about efficiency. You have the staff area in blue that can come, or if you're just volunteering that morning or dropping off a snack for your kid's class, you can come and go and not get in the way of that drop-off traffic. So all types of efficiencies meant to keep that traffic off of the public road and on-site. You also see other improvements. I mentioned using the acreage better by squaring up the building. You see that the dumpsters have been relocated to be more sensitive to our neighbors. That was a comment that we heard at our community meeting. You see, the landscaping has been intentionally improved in certain areas where our residential neighbors immediately abut the site. So, these are types of ways that with a rebuild, with modernization, we can increase the site functionality. Also, wanted to talk about the zoning sketch plan that accompanies this conditional request. So you've seen in your packet, in the staff report, there is a set of narrative conditions that accompany the rezoning. It's an institutional request, conditional, but also this zoning sketch plan accompanies it. And this is different from the site plan you saw, again, because this is entitlements, but what we've done here is we've backed into this sketch plan based on the site plan we just talked through. So what aspects of that site plan need to be memorialized here at the zoning phase so that regardless of the, you know, the variations and the revisions that have to happen between now and actually building something vertically, the attributes of the zoning that ensure that this case is reasonable in the public interest and consistent with your comprehensive planning guidance remain in place? So that's where we've memorialized the site access, points of access that were evaluated by the Department of Transportation here, because we know that those access points lead to those queuing improvements and those prohibitions against stacking out in the public right-of-way. So that's why that's what you see here memorialized in the zoning. Same with the landscaping provisions that we talked about, and you heard Mr. Shannon mention. Those aren't just features of the site plan that we're thinking about, those are memorialized here in the zoning. So regardless of how that building may get tweaked as it goes through that site planning process, the landscaping remains in place. And of course, you see a nice unified holistic green site that's entirely within the city and entirely within one zoning district, so you don't have any unnecessary complexities about what's in the county versus the city and what's in what zoning district. So, the other items I wanted to lift up were the fact that, again, Mr. Shannon mentioned the consistency with the comprehensive plan. This is in the suburban residential designation, and of course, as you've heard and you know, institutional supporting uses are part of what that designation embraces. And that's a tried and true planning practice, right? Keeping your churches, your places of worship, your schools inside the neighborhood so that they serve the people who live there. So that's right in keeping with that. Again, the zoning designation with conditions to make it appropriate is how the city staff is getting to that comprehensive planning guidance, so that's why we filed this way. Also, with the help of the zoning conditions that I've talked about, to ensure that the case is appropriately scoped and tailored, to make sure that that designation fits within that comprehensive planning guidance. Lastly, I mentioned, of course, part of your analysis is to look at reasonableness and in the public interest, and I would suggest to you that we have 68 years of history here to tell us that this land use does work here, it is reasonable, and we're improving upon that with the site functionality aspects that I've discussed, that Mr. Shannon has discussed, to ensure that as we rebuild, not only is it better for students, for the Guilford County school system, but for the residents who live around it, making sure those impacts are managed so that compatibility is maintained and improved, and we can ensure that consistency going forward and that reasonableness, that this is serving the community that it's meant to serve in a better way, in a more functional way. We did hold a neighborhood meeting on March 17th. We had three people attend. I believe they were all from the same household, and they asked about the dumpster locations, which we've addressed. We talked about the improved traffic management and queuing scenarios, which was appreciated. We talked about the landscape buffer additions, which I think was well-received, and we did not hear anything outside of that meeting, inclusive of our hearing at Planning and Zoning Commission. We didn't have any opposition or commentary there either. So again, I hope that means that this is straightforward, it's in keeping with Guilford County Schools' commitment to improve upon its facilities and the Planning Department's sound guidance here to create and craft the best case to put before you. I have here with me Mr. Gene Sides. He's the man who's been working on this, down in the details, as all these new campuses are coming to fruition. So if we have any operational or construction, timing, phasing questions, he can help us with those. I'm also here for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council for the applicant? Okay, thank you. On our sign-in sheet, we don't have anyone signed up, but is there anyone here who wishes to speak for this public hearing item? Come forward, Mr. Orms, you have three minutes to address council.
My name is Ken Orms. Earlier this evening, council violated state law regarding the maintenance of official minutes. North Carolina 143-318.10 requires, quote, "Every public body shall..."
Mr. Orms, are you speaking about the public hearing item, about the school, that is?
Yes, because I'm concerned that the actions that, about the school and the impact the discussion will have on the official minutes.
You're concerned about the official minutes for the school item?
Well, for the council in general, but also for the school issue. Because the council, when you approve the minutes for the May 5 council meeting earlier, you violated state law. The minutes states that there were seven people who spoke, but does not include a single word about what they had to say. So it's hard to see that the, how eliminating their comments meets the legal requirements for full and accurate minutes. I first contacted city clerk when my comments...
Ken, Mr. Orms, I need you to start talking about the school, or I need you to take a seat. Talk about the school. We're not talking about May 5 minutes. This is about the school. This is a public hearing specifically about the school. This is not public comment, period. If we let people come up during every public hearing to talk about things that are not that topic, that would be disrespectful to the listeners and to the applicants who came for tonight's meeting. Speak about the school.
I oppose this because Guilford County burdened every single taxpayer with $2 billion worth of debt that has to be paid back within 20 years, and the $1.7 billion that they got voters, that they tricked voters to approve, plus the $300 million that was approved by a previous Guilford County Board, that's a total of $2 billion, and the payback, they're going to have to pay back $3 billion. You have 10 years to spend the money, 20 years to pay it back. So a person born today, right now, in the next five minutes, will still be paying that debt when they're 30 years old and maybe have a family of their own. And anything to do to require Guilford County to be more logical and to spend their money more appropriately is a good thing to do. Initially, they talked about expanding the school here that we're talking about tonight, and then they decided, no, it's better off to knock it down and disperse the students to other schools for the two years it's going to take to rebuild it. So they keep going back and forth, back and forth. They don't have a consistent floor plan for schools as they build, which would have reduced costs, and anything that we can do to minimize the cost and the tax burden to taxpayers is important.
Thank you, Mr. Orms. Your comments are duly noted. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during this public hearing? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and make a motion to approve this item, item 2025-179, Annexation Request 25-01. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, recognize to Councilmember Holmes. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Next item that we just heard the presentation on as well, is item 2025-178, Public Hearing, Guilford County Board of Education, Zoning Map Amendment 25-04. We've heard on this item, at this time, I'll make a motion to approve this item and state that it is consistent and reasonable with regard to our consistency and reasonable in the statements as outlined in the staff report.
Second.
The second, recognize to Councilmember Cook. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Our next item, item 2025-181, Bond Order, Authorizing Issuance of Series 2025 Combined Enterprise System Revenue Bonds. Council is requested to approve the attached bond order authorizing the sale and issuance by City of High Point, North Carolina, not to exceed $41.2 million combined enterprise system revenue bonds, Series 2025, and authorizing the execution and delivery of certain documents in connection therewith. With that, I'll recognize Mr. Bobby Fitchon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Two weeks ago, I was here with the initial resolution for this item. This is the final bond order authorizing the issuance of up to $41.2 million in revenue bonds for the water sewer system. The projects include the Waterview Pump Station improvements, West Side Centrifuge replacement, expansion of the White Mill Lift Station, the replacement of existing filters at the Ward Treatment Plant, and the replacement of the East Side Treatment Plant UV Disinfection System. After council's consideration tonight, the LGC will consider the item on June 3. If they approve, we will sell on June 4 and close before the end of June. Happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item? Not, I make a motion to approve bond order authorizing the sale and issuance by City of High Point, North Carolina, of not to exceed $41,200,000 combined enterprise system revenue bonds, Series 2025, and authorizing the execution and delivery of certain documents in connection therewith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, recognized by Councilmember Johnson. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Thank you so much, Mr. Fitchon. Next item is 2025-200, Consideration of an Appointment to the High Point Economic Development Board of Directors. Council is requested to confirm the mayor's recommendation to appoint Jane Leibshire to the High Point Economic Development Board of Directors to fill an unexpired term. The appointment will be effective immediately and will... The appointment will be effective immediately and will expire on December 31st, 2025. Any discussion on this motion? If not, I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, recognized, Mayor Proton Moore. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. We thank Ms. Leibshire for her service. Next item, 2025-201, consideration of reappointments to the Board of Adjustment. Council is requested to confirm mayor's recommendations to reappoint No Boo as an alternate member and Matt Whitmire as a member to the Board of Adjustment. Terms are effective July 1st of this year and expire on June 30th, 2028. Is there any discussion on this motion? If not, then we'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion recognized to Mayor Proton Moore, seconded by council member Holmes. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Next item is 2025-202, consideration of reappointments to the Historic Preservation Commission. Council is requested to confirm reappointments to this commission with terms effective July 1st, 2025 and expiring on June 30th, 2028. Council member Holmes recommends the appointment of Holly Davis. Council member Cook recommends the reappointment of John Mays. And Mayor Jefferson recommends the reappointment of Rodney Smith. Is there any, is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's recognized to council member Cook. Second, recognized to council member Johnson. Any discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. The next is item 2025-203, consideration of reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Council is requested to confirm council member Harmon's recommendation to reappoint Ray Wheatley to Planning and Zoning Commission, term effective July 1st of this year, expiring on June 30th, 2028. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
We recognize council member Harmon, second to council member Peters. Any discussion on the motion to approve this appointment? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. We've come to the end of our agenda, but before we depart and adjourn, I want to recognize members, council from the ayes, in case there are any questions or comments or announcements before we end today's meeting.
I just want to make a comment that it was a great weekend for the Rockers this weekend. I did get to go to the game yesterday, and so it was a really great winning weekend for the Rockers, so.
Agreed. Thank you, council member Peters. Any other announcements?
Go ahead, Amanda, go.
I just wanted to say I had a great time in Raleigh with the Continuum of Care Conference. Guilford County was very well represented last week and also contributed to amazing presentations from our local COC, so I was very proud to be there. Unfortunately, the content is not always easy in talking about how we deal with the unhoused in our state, and the numbers are not good for us, but it's good to know that there are good people working on this.
Agreed. Thank you so much for that, council member Cook. Any other discussion? Mayor Proton?
Just a comment or two. The, we just went across about five or six boards there electing peoples. I just wanted to echo your comment about Ms. Leibshire and thank all those that are willing to step up and serve on those boards and commission, give their time and their talent. It means a lot to the nuts and bolts of running the city. So a big, big thank you to all those who are willing to do that, and...
Thank you, Mayor Proton.
I think that'll get it.
Thank you. And any other comments or announcements? I would like to make sure the public is aware that at 5:00 PM, 5:00 PM Wednesday, June 4th, NC By Train Expansion and Improvement will be having a public engagement event here at our library for those who are interested in passenger rail here in the state and how folks can either get into High Point or depart from High Point on passenger rail. That'd be a great opportunity to engage with the Department of Transportation. They really want to hear from people here in High Point. Ultimately, there were some changes made, I think in 2024, was it, when the change was made? When they reduced the stops that come to High Point, and we've received some feedback. We took that feedback that we received and communicated it back to the Department of Transportation where folks feel like we need those stops back here in High Point. And I can tell you, having spoken to folks down in Salisbury, Kannapolis, some other cities, they feel very strongly about it, too. And so if you are someone who wants to show up to be a part of that discussion, or you know someone who's interested in being a part of that discussion, please save the date, Wednesday, June 4th at 5:00 PM in the, in High Point's public library in the Morgan Room, NC By Train Expansion and Improvement Public Engagement.
Mayor Jefferson?
Yes.
Also, tomorrow at 6:00 PM, Housing and Community Development will be holding a meeting at High Point Parks and Recreation at 136 North Point. Discussion on community development, so is that something that you're passionate about, please, as it does for the public?
Thank you, council member Holmes.
Am I supposed to ask something, Mayor?
I'll go ahead and add it for you. At 4:00 PM on Tuesday, June 10th, The Bridge will be having their grand opening.
I know something about that.
I didn't mean to stir your thunder. Do you want to tell everyone about that?
No, you just did. Thank you.
No, but I can't.
1104 East Green Drive, learn about a new initiative in High Point. It's not a city initiative, by the way, it's a nonprofit initiative. Thank you for that, Mayor.
That's June 10th?
June 10th.
June 10th at 4:00.
I've never had on during that.
Okay.
One more thing. I just have to say kudos to council member Dr. Patrick Harmon on the longest table yesterday that Rowan High Point did. It was amazing. It was just, it was wonderful seeing community coming together.
It was a lot of fun.
And conversations, and thank you so much for spearheading that.
Yeah, you bet. It was a southside rec center on the freeway. It was fun. Next year, y'all will come, next year. It was about 100 people there yesterday, it's a good crowd. I'm done now.
Well, no, I was listening. Just making sure we're making space, that's all. Any other comments, announcements? If not, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is recognized, the council member Holmes, second to council member Peters. Any discussion on the motion to adjourn? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and we are adjourned.